Counselor, we're going to have the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice that this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
For Monday, January 24, 2022, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan is absent. Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Rieker?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Candorozzi is absent. Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Here.
We have a motion for the Pagan of the Secretary for the CV, January 24, 2022. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Engineering and planning matters, gentlemen, be it anything?
No, sir.
Okay, and legal matters?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, the plan is, and with the chairman's approval, we are going to have a brief executive session after the hearings. And another legal matter, I can deal with it, I guess respectfully, with the applications, Block 2701, Lot 2. Just so the board is aware, this matter had been scheduled for this date. One of the reasons it was scheduled is the same applicant involving the same property is, has brought litigation against the zoning board in Jackson Township related to a similar application that had received a D5 density, no, strike that, a density variance. That matter was heard before Judge Ford. One of the arguments that the applicant has made, depending on what happens with that action, is they're asking potentially the township for expectation damages related to alleged delays. So it was important, obviously, for the planning board to mitigate those damages, to have the matter on tonight. There was a scheduling issue with one of the applicant's professionals. So it's important for the record to indicate there's a balancing. There's reasons why the, there's no alternative, I'll say it this way, for the, for the board if the applicant is not prepared to go, because the alternative of simply dismissing the case actually has the potential to be adverse to both the municipal position as well as the applicant. But the record should be clear that the board was ready, willing, and able to hear the application at this point, so that should it become necessary to argue that damages were not mitigated, we have it on the record that it was done so. With that, though, and because of the ongoing litigation, I would ask the board, notwithstanding the schedule, to carry it simply to the February 7, 2022 meeting.
Okay, so again, that's Block 20701, Lot 2?
Yes, sir.
Didn't hold. Can I get a motion to carry that to our February 7 meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing further. Okay, so let's jump right into Block 5301, Lot 12, 146 North County Line Road. Mr. Clea?
Um.
Hold on, Mr. Clea, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application we started back in November 15 involving a 15,880 square foot office and retail building. We have received revised plans, and the overall floor area has been reduced. We're now at 13,646, which involves 5600 square feet of retail, and the basement area has been reduced. Instead of a full basement, there's a half basement proposed, 4,275 square feet. The parking variance still remains. The floor area or the definition requires gross floor area. It makes no provisions for basements, mezzanine, so leave it to the applicant to address those deficiencies. The revised plans also will provide for three electric vehicles charging stations to the rear of the site, and they've also provided a loading, a loading zone. Variance approval for parking area setbacks to residential and non-residential uses are still, still in place, so of course some testimony from the applicant regarding those variances. I'll leave it to the applicant to pick up any plan revisions that I missed, but that pretty much sums it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report, a second report dated January 20 of this year. Mr. Clea got it all. I would simply ask that the applicant re-explain or re-testify to the building itself, the square footages of each floor, summary of it, and how they came up with the parking calculations. The waivers and variances for the rear buffer and the setbacks for the parking to the rear of the property are the same as they were in the previous application, previous submission. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Gregory Hock from Darcy Johnson Day, on behalf of applicant 146 North County Line Road. As indicated by your professionals, we were here previously. We did start the application, gave some testimony. Essentially, this is a mixed use, primarily office space with some retail units as well. We gave an overview of that, and then when we got into some of the nitty-gritty on the building, the board had some very important and accurate questions, and we didn't have all the answers for you. So we asked for an adjournment. We wanted to sort of go back and look at some of those issues that the board raised. In the meantime, we have done that. We actually have some new experts on from an architect's standpoint who will be testifying tonight, and we hope to answer all your questions to your satisfaction. But I'd like to begin with Graham McFarlane, if we could have him sworn, to give some initial testimony.
Thank you, Mr. McFarlane, for raising right hand. Do you silently swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I know you've been previously sworn on this application, and your credentials were accepted, correct?
Correct.
To the chairman.
Thank you. So again, we asked, he'd be admitted as a professional engineer and professional planner for purposes of the hearing.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McFarlane, could you, just to refresh the board's recollection, give us a general overview of the site and any changes since the last plan on the site plan?
Sure. Maybe before we start, we can, we can give the board the copies we have of the, of the new exhibits that we've made, so the board has them at their fingertips. So what the council is bringing up to the board are the exhibits that we submitted, the additional exhibits in support of the application. I believe they're A8 through, through A...
Mr. McFarlane, I apologize. I neglected to make an announcement. Both Mr. Herman and Mr. Bernstein are qualified to hear this application. They both have affirmed and certified that they have, in fact, reviewed the recording and are ready to, and are ready to participate.
Okay, so the board members are receiving, again, the exhibits, the additional exhibits we prepared as part of the application, which are identified as A8 through A16. And what I'll do is I'll just, I'll just walk through those real, real quick as an overview, and just to touch on the things, or the items we've, we've clarified since the initial hearing. Again, as Mr. Hock said, we did have some discrepancies or inconsistencies between floor areas and, and what was, you know, what was proposed. I think we've cleaned all that up with our site plan and with the amended architectural plans. So A8 that you can see up on the screen is the, is revised site plan dated January 10 of 2022. The only revision to the plan is clarifying the floor areas in these tables that's, that are down at the bottom left-hand side of the, of the plan. What is proposed, I'll just run through very quickly, a mixed-use building containing office space and, and retail space. There's an office suite on the, on the, you know, top or what is the left side of the building on the first floor. Then there are three retail, retail suites, number one, two, one, you know, number one, two, and three. The office space then continues on the second floor, and then I'm sure the board recalls, we're proposing a mezzanine on the next level. Then we're also proposing basement space underneath the office, underneath the office area only. And our client's intention is to utilize that basement space, you know, as a computer center and data storage, which he did testify to last time. So the, the floor areas proposed, the, the gross floor areas tabulated in accordance with Jackson ordinance, the office space is a total of 13,646 square feet. The retail space totaled 5,601 square feet. The mezzanine space, 2,577 speeds, 77 square feet. The basement, 4,275 square feet. And that does show on the architectural plans. I'll show you those in a few minutes. When we add up the office and the retail, we get 19,247, which is what we've utilized in determining what we believe is the true parking demand or the parking need for, for this application. When we add the, the mezzanine and the basement to that footage, so if we were to look at it as a total gross floor area of the building, we get 26,099 square feet. So if one were to calculate the, the number of parking spaces by strict application of the language in your ordinance, that would give us 131 parking spaces. Because your ordinance says that gross floor area is gross floor area, doesn't matter what it's used for, as long as big picture, it's office or retail, you have to have one space per, per 200 square feet. Our position is that we don't believe that any parking spaces are, are truly required for that basement space or for that, or for that mezzanine space. I'm sure Mr. Hock will discuss a little bit later about some of the limitations or restrictions that our client is willing to put on those spaces. So the board and the town are assured that they're going to be utilized as we're discussing here tonight and as the board is, is contemplating the application. Now, this plan was also updated to just to show three car charging stations in the back, behind the building, in the rear portion there, so we have three EV stations proposed. And although it doesn't show on the, on the plans anyplace yet, our client does agree to the, to the provision of providing some, some solar power, which would be roof, some, some roof-mounted panels. We don't know the exact number yet or, or what portion of, of the electricity they would be able to serve for the building, but our client has committed that he will be glad to provide some, some solar panel, solar power. So Anthony, I'm just going to ask you if we can run through these other exhibits real, real quick, just to, just to show the board the amended plans and just briefly, briefly discuss. So A9, you can see, is a revised basement plan. Again, as I previously discussed, it just shows a basement underneath the office portion of the building. And what this plan shows, this, this plan right now just, is just showing one rack for, for data storage. I don't think our client knows the exact number of racks or, or types of systems that he would have in this space, but in, in, you know, in concept, he just wants to have this space available, again, for, for a computer center and for, for data storage. So again, that, that basement area, this area here on the left side of, of that particular plan of A9, is 4,275 square feet. Anthony, go to the next one, please. A10 is the, is the updated floor plan of the first floor. Again, as I discussed previously, you can see the office space is on, is on the left side, as you looked at this plan, and then we have three retail suites. The retail suites also, also have small office component associated with each of those particular uses. The parking ratio is the same for office and retail in your ordinance at one per 200. So in our tabulation of office retail, we've included the area on the left as office. Areas associated with the three suites are considered as retail spaces for, for the purposes of tabulating the spaces in, in this presentation. You can go to the next one. Second floor plan, you can see a conference room, offices around the outside, a two-story lobby, so this would be open, open down below, and then just a, you know, a common office area that, that would be utilized, you know, for, for cubicle-type arrangement. And then, next one, please. This is A12, which shows the mezzanine plan. There was a lot of discussion and some discrepancies on the original plans that were, were submitted. What this plan now shows is the mezzanine space is limited just to the perimeter area here on, on these three sides, which are basically over the second floor office component. This area here in the middle, in the middle of it is going to be open to down below, so the second floor offices are going to have a, you know, a two-story feel, give, give, give nice, nice volume and nice open space to those offices. And again, the mezzanine, our concept is that there would just be some, you know, some loose chairs, loose tables for occupants and tenants of the building to go up to that space, take a phone call, work on a laptop, maybe have, you know, some impromptu meetings up there, but not separately leasable space, only utilized by tenants and occupants of the building. You know, the, the vision of our client is to make this a first-class space that, that he can attract, he, he can attract very, you know, beneficial and, and high-end type customers that are going to want this type of space and hopefully commit to being in Jackson Township for, you know, for a long time. And we do have a couple of building elevations to show, Anthony. Go to A13. A13 just, just shows the architect's elevation views of the, of the building. The building is mostly going to be, be glass front, you know, my opinion, it's a very nicely designed building. I hope, hope the board feels, feels the same way. Plan complies in, in all regards to ordinance requirements for, for building height, so there's no, no relief sought, sought there. A14, please, Anthony. A14 is an isometric, you know, a bird's eye isometric view of the building. It shows, you know, shows the building and shows a pretty good rendering of the, of the site work that's proposed. You can see the access to the site from the one driveway, some parking in front of the site, driveway around the entire, entire building that, that provides for, you know, day-to-day access as well as emergency access around the entirety of the building, and then some parking spaces in the rear. This plan also shows adjoining properties of Hampshire Hills lying, lying to the north. Interesting to note that there is a, a separate lot that lies in between the subject property and Hampshire, Hampshire Boulevard, which is an open space lot that's owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association of Hampshire Hills. Next one, Anthony? And scroll up a little bit for us. And then we just have two renderings of the building. This is A15, which is called rendering number one, really kind of a street view and showing the, showing the design of the building, showing the office area, you know, big, big glass front showing a nice, nice view to the building, showing the retail components with office above on the right-hand side. And then if you go to A16 for me? And A16 is, is also an elevation viewer rendering showing the building from, from straight on. Again, it shows the majority of the building will, will be glass front and shows some of the other materials and colors that are being contemplated for the, for the, for the building. We are in receipt, receipt of the review letters from the board's professionals, and there were a couple of items that we had some discussion on last time, and maybe we'll just, we'll just touch on, touch on those again. Anthony, go back to, back to A8 for me, the amended site plan. If the, if, if the board, board recalls, you know, this project was previously approved, there were some, a couple of variances and waivers that were previously granted. We did have some discussion on, on those last time. One of them related to the, to the sign at, at the front of the site, where previously we had gotten a variance to allow the sign to be a little bit closer to, to County Line Road than is permissible. The testimony at the initial hearing was that, in our opinion, having the sign closer to the road actually improves safety and makes the sign more visible. So I'd still offer that, that same testimony still holds for this, for this amended application.
And I would just add, in the prior approvals in the, on this property, the board did make that finding. They found that safety was increased based on the location of the road, where this, this property sits. By having the sign a little bit closer, it actually enhances safety of the motorist. That was found and approved in the last resolution. We think the conditions are the same. We're asking for that variance again. Is that correct?
Agreed. This application, this is a, this is a, a commercial use that, you know, technically it does, but an area zoned for residential use. I talked about this, this strip lot that lies behind and adjacent to our, our project, which I believe is Lot, Lot 5301, Lot 9 currently. Again, that's an open space lot that is owned and maintained by Hampshire Hills Homeowners Association, but technically the ordinance still requires us to provide a, a buffer. The buffer size is based upon area of the building. So by ordinance, we would require a 25-foot buffer along what's our rear property line. Again, this, this joint property, even though it's an open space lot, it is zoned, it is in a residential zone, so by ordinance, we're, we're required to, to have a buffer. We have asked for a waiver, and I had, had an exhibit previously that showed that we'll provide a waiver, or we'll provide the buffer in the area that we can. We are requesting relief to allow it to be encroached in, you know, in, in, you know, basically in this corner, also due to the unique shape of the property, where the rear property line is not parallel to the, to the front property line. So I believe the, the, the board could be justified in granting that relief based upon those particulars of the application. We also did get some comment from, from adjoining property owner who lives on, who lives just across the street on Hampshire Hills, pretty much lives right where I'm, where I'm pointing right now. He made some comments about the buffer, and he made some comments about the, about the dumpster. Dumpster we have shown is in, is in a location permitted by ordinance, where it's, it's 10 feet from the, from the property line. But I've, I've taken a look at this, and we've agreed that if, if the board would like us, we can, you know, we can relocate this dumpster further down in this parking aisle, so that it would be more obscured or more blocked by the buffer that we're going to provide. We're also willing to provide a fence along the, along our rear curb line to increase the, the privacy and to, and to minimize any impacts to anybody who would be on Hampshire Hills or in a neighborhood behind. So my, my client is willing to make those, to make those changes to the plan. The board recalls, the original application did call for a fence on the, on the western property line, the privacy fence. That still remains in this, in this amended, in this amended plan.
And again, I think you touched on the neighbor's request for a fence on the rear property line.
Correct.
And we have no objection to that, right?
Correct. Mr. Clea had, had pointed out a design waiver related to the islands in the, in the parking areas, where I believe ordinance requirement is, is 10 feet, and we have them, the ones in the rear, we have proposed at, at 6 feet, and we have, we have the, we have two in the front part of the site that are proposed as four feet wide. Those are, those are considered design waivers. The, the test for grant of a, of a design waiver, as required by the land use law, for grant of, of a waiver, the test is that the waiver should be reasonable and within a general purpose and intent of the provisions of the ordinance. I would argue that the purpose and intent of the ordinance for having these, these landscape islands is to allow for adequate circulation, is to allow for traffic to move safely, it's to provide for separation between the parking spaces and the drive aisles. And my, my opinion is that having these four feet and six feet wide is a, is a very insignificant change, and my, my opinion is this does allow for, it does satisfy the intent and purpose of the ordinance. We do have landscaping proposed within those islands as well. Again, although it does not technically meet the ordinance, the ordinance standard for those, what the ordinance terms as safety, safety islands. Mr. Clea did make some other technical comments, and I think we're just, just scanning through it very quickly, but I don't take any objection to any of his other comments. Mr. Peters also issued a letter, revised letter on the amended plans dated January 20. Mr. Peters, of course, summarized the documents presented and talks about two variances for setback from property line, which I did talk about at the, at the initial hearing. So I don't think I need to go over that again, unless the board wants to hear about that again.
Why don't you do that? Just to spend a couple of months.
Okay, so Anthony, if you could go back to, back to A4, the initial submission? A4. It's A4, it was a parking and buffer exhibit?
Mr. McFarlane, while we're waiting, I have a question with regards to, I noticed in the women's bathroom, and there's three would appear to be privacy rooms in there? I've never seen that before.
I'll have to defer to the architect then.
Mr. McFarlane, if I may, through the chairman, while they're looking, you were going to skip over it completely. Why don't you just briefly describe what you were doing?
Right. Well, if the, if, if, if the board, board recalls, um, previous, previously, just want to get the facts right, Lot 13 lies to the, lies to the west of the subject property. The parking setback there, that variance was, was previously granted to allow about seven feet to that curb line, which if you look at the rendering that's up there, that would be the curb line here that shows on the left side of the rendering. So that has not changed. That variance was granted with the, with the original application. This amended plan, we, we are asking for some additional relief for the setback north along, along Lot 9, which is, which is the lot in the, in the back of the site. It's, again, it's that open space lot that's, that's owned and maintained by Hampshire, Hampshire Hills. Did he find that?
Yeah, unfortunately, the ones from the last hearing are not on the computer. We don't know why.
Oh, okay, so they were removed.
We have.
Maybe we go back to the site plan?
Yes, we can go from there.
That was A? A8?
Yes.
We had the really pretty colored one.
Yes, correct.
We can't find that.
Yes. So as I, as I just testified, the setback to Lot 13 of seven, I think it's about 7.2 feet. That was previously granted with the original application. What we're asking for now is a setback to Lot 9 in this corner of the site, to about 4.9 feet. Again, just in this corner of the site here for these spaces in the corner, and then also for these couple of spaces, that would be Lot 11. We have, we have two and a half feet at, at this corner to a lot, Lot 11, which is a, which is a commercial, commercial business. And also relief for the, the landscape buffer, as I previously spoke, where 25 feet by ordinance is required along the entire rear property line. Again, since that Lot 9, even though it's a, even though it's a conservation use, it's still in a residential zone, so the ordinance... it's still in a residential zone, so the ordinance does require a buffer to be provided. We've also asked for a waiver of street trees along the frontage of the site, consistent with the character and approvals of other commercial development in the vicinity. Seems to be a 50/50 shot whether there are or not street trees along properties that have been developed along County Line Road in this area. I would stipulate that, you know, street trees along this type of development, all they do is obscure view and visibility. And I really don't think they're warranted for this type of application. I don't think they lend any benefit to this type of project. But I believe that covers those items. And just going through Mr. Peters' letter real quick, he pointed out the parking area setback, those I just spoke about. The landscape islands, he spoke about, and similar comment that Mr. Klee had, or spoke about that. We have some work to do on the lighting plan. We'll agree to address that. Solid waste provisions, screening for the dumpster, we'll agree to address that. And again, we would move that dumpster if the board feels it's in the best interest of the adjoining property owner. And I think that covers pretty much all of the technical comments.
Just circling back to the variances for a second. Is it your opinion that the sign location promotes the zoning purpose of safety, and that's a better alternative than what the ordinance requires here?
Yes.
And do you feel that the shape of the lot justifies a C1 variance due to a unique shape of our rear line and how the lot lines line up one another?
Yes, yes.
And as you indicated, there's a sort of an open space lot. Does that also, in your opinion, minimize or eliminate any potential detriment that would come from these setback variances?
Yes.
Okay. You had an opportunity to review the architectural plans?
Yes.
In your opinion, are they an aesthetically pleasing design?
I believe it is.
Do you feel it's an improvement to this site and the surrounding neighborhood based on that building design?
Yes, considerably.
And that you believe, I guess, would also promote the purposes of aesthetics under C2, also justifying, in your opinion, a grant of the variances requested?
Yes.
Okay, and you believe these variances could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or the zoning ordinance, is that right?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Klee, do you have any recommendations or suggestions from the state regarding percentage of EV slots? Is there anything out there?
I believe the legislation provides for X amount of parking spaces, there has to be a certain amount of charging stations, there's that ratio. And I'm going to assume that, you know, the applicant has investigated that, and the number of parking spaces that he's providing calls for three stations.
And we would agree that if that regulation is amended or clarified during resolution compliance, we'll provide what that recommends.
Thank you.
And if I could follow up, we're talking about solar and energy. Mr. McFarland, I think you indicated that the applicant would be willing to put some solar on top. Should the board approve it? Is that a, for resolution implies, that a general load on the joint, that X square foot of solar panels will be provided on the roof? Do we need to see them in the architecturals? I'm just wondering in the future.
I agree with you. Before we answer that question, maybe we hear from the architect a little bit, and then get some discussion on that.
Thank you.
You were asking about the privacy rooms. I've been in some buildings in New York where they have these types of privacy rooms for nursing mothers and changing facilities. So that's what I assumed that these might be.
Yes, and we could certainly discuss that more with the architect, but I think that's part of the plan. I think we could get, to help you out, Mr. Fleming, some more discussion with the architect. Again, our argument, our case is, is that the use of these particular areas should assist the board in justifying the variance because it's a duplicate. Well, I don't. I can only respond by saying none of bathrooms doesn't correlate in ordinance to parking spaces. Understood. But again, we'll be happy to get into that more with the architect and try to address that for you. The only response I could have is that, and I've been on the other side, I represent boards. I understand what you're telling me, believe me. It's, once we leave here, what happens? I get it. Which is why we've offered, and I offer again, to dial in with the assistance of the professionals, Mr. Gertner, any restrictions you deem advisable in the resolution so that there's no question of enforcement. We can make those a matter of record, too. We could have the resolution recorded. We could also have those provisions in the resolution. So any future buyer can't come before you and say, "I didn't know. I had no idea. I bought it, and I put this thing in the basement." That can't happen because it'll be a matter of record title. And we're happy to do that, again, because we're not trying, we're not trying to, you know, do anything funny here. We want it to tell you exactly what our plan is, and we want you to lock us in to that exact plan. That's what we're asking.
You know, we've had a couple of applications lately, and it really bothers me that here we have a rectangular piece of land with probably no constraints, yet we have the request for all these variances because you want to put the largest building that you possibly can on the piece of property that you have and not abide by the parking, you know, waivers and so forth. Now, this, and I don't know why, you know, the professionals, why you're not telling your clients, listen, you have this piece of property, you're not, there's no arch that's a piece of property. It's not a high shape, so design your building to fit the property, to fit the parking. That's the way that these applications should be presented. And I don't know if the professionals are not doing that or whether the applicant is pushing the professionals, pushing the envelope to get the most of building that they possibly can on the piece of property. So I have a problem with that. And the other thing is, now, is this a true representation of what the building is going to look like with all the trees and so forth?
I believe that it is.
Because you mentioned that you didn't want trees in the front to obscure the building, which again.
Correct.
But in your picture here, the whole front of it is covered with trees. Now, are those existing trees? Are they there now?
We are not looking to plant trees along the frontage of the site. And our landscape plan does not call for trees along the frontage of the site.
I don't see any landscape at all because, you know, it's either blacktop building, and that's it. There's no place to landscape.
Well, the application does meet the requirements for impervious coverage and for landscaping, outlined in new ordinance, with the exception of the one waiver that we're asking for from street trees along the site frontage.
Right, and you're asking for that waiver, but I'm looking at your artist rendition of this property, and I see what looks like a heavily wooded area in the front of this.
Right, I would tell you, that's not, that is not an accurate depiction of what is proposed. We are not proposing those trees along the site frontage. If you look at the landscape plan, that's included in our plans and the site plans. We do not have street trees shown along the site frontage. Those street trees are not proposed.
So this is not an actual representation of the existing conditions. Is that true?
Well, that's not intended to represent the existing conditions. That rendering is to represent the proposed condition of the building and the site improvements. And the architect who prepared that, he put some vegetation in the front of the site there, which is not proposed on our site plan. I'm just trying to clarify for you what is proposed so that everyone's on the same page. You know, we're not proposing those trees along the frontage of the site.
This, to me, looks like this is a natural, mature tree. Mr. Chairman, maybe, and just to create the record, two things. One, Mr. McFarland's made a representation that the architect did it. Did you prepare that?
I did not. The architect.
So the architect is gonna have to explain why the rendering that you have as an exhibit doesn't match up with the site plan, though it took you to you to ask the question to have Mr. McFarland indicate that in fact it is not a totally true rendition of the site plan. I would also ask the architect to, based on the fact that at least the architect thought there should be some vegetation in that front, I think the architect should be prepared to testify as to what streetscape and landscape should be in the front to add some color and definition to the front between County Line Road and the building.
Well, if we're on that, just for a minute, while we have the site pulled up, Anthony, can you zoom in on this driveway for me? And I failed to discuss this previously. Maybe this'll clarify it. You can see on A8, you can see this dash line here. This dash line here is a site triangle required by Ocean County for a driveway, 30 feet by 100 feet. So within that site triangle, we cannot plant, not plant, street trees, okay? So, and we also have detention basin in the front, you know, with a retaining wall. It's really not possible to plant the type or character of street trees that are contemplated by the ordinance in close proximity to that retaining wall or to the sidewalk. What we could do is we could plant some shrubbery to bring some color in, to provide some softening of that frontage of the site. But again, we do have a site triangle that limits, that limits or prohibits the planting of street trees. The only opportunity would be the northern portion, you know, I'm gonna call it just roughly, the, I'm sorry, the western, 1/3 of the site. We may be able to put some shrub, shrub replantings in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just so the record's clear, the site triangle that goes through the Stormwater Management Basin isn't necessary. It's a divided highway. Cars travel in that direction. There's no need for the site triangle past the intersection.
We could request a waiver from the county of that requirement. But the county tells me that they want site triangles in both directions. That's their standard requirement.
I'm not familiar with the county requiring in a direction where you can't travel. So there's nothing to see. Cars are past you. So I really don't want to belabor the point. It's no use, and quite frankly, there aren't any trees out there anywhere. There's not a tree planted within 50 feet of the front of the property on the plans. So if that's important to the board, then yes, the applicant's got some homework or explaining to do.
I'm not sure where you're asking about. Here? Well, that's all part of the Stormwater Basin. This, where I'm pointing now is an access drive down to the basin. And then this is all part of the Stormwater Basin here. And the board may recall, while we're talking about parking, our original application, we did have a couple parking spaces in here. And my client yelled at me for taking those parking spaces off of the plan. But when I reviewed the plan again, we prepared a amended plan, I really didn't like where those spaces were located in proximity to the driveway. So I told him, "I'm not putting them there." So he yelled at me a couple times. He told me he was already approved with those parking spaces there. And I told him, "No, I'm taking those parking spaces off the plan," so. Well, there are always alternatives, as, you know, Mr. Hudak was talking. Of course, our client is trying to get what he can out of the property while preparing a beautiful building that's gonna hopefully, you know, give its return in rent payments for years and years to come, but also something that the town and the board, hopefully, are gonna be proud of when it's done. Big picture, our argument is that the basement and the mezzanine don't create any parking demand. The board seems to be, of course, having, you know, struggling with that concept. But we're also gonna have some testimony from the traffic engineer to talk about that. And then we'll have the architect give some testimony about some of the other questions. That's why we're here talking about this. We understand that we need approval of the board, and, you know, we're listening to the input of the board. And hopefully, we can come to some agreement on this tonight.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so just two things as the architect gets prepared. I think one is, I don't hear any cry from the board to provide street trees based on all the testimony, but the softening of that front with some shrubbery and landscape should be addressed, in my opinion, subject to the board. Secondarily, I just want to make sure the record is clear, one way or the other. Is it true that your testimony, your argument in support of the parking variance is that you have, that if the building was designed without a basement and without this mezzanine, you would require 97 spaces, and you're providing 102?
Correct.
I just, just so the record is clear. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Anthony, maybe you can pan over for me, just so we can get it on the screen. Yes, currently, the trash enclosure is located at the, I guess that's the eastern, northeastern corner. And your question is, can we put it on the northwestern corner? And I would agree that, yes, it's possible. Your ordinance does require it to be located 10 feet from property line. So if I were to put it, if you can maybe center this a little more, a little better, Anthony? If I were to put it right in that corner, we'd be asking for... If I were to put it right in that corner, we'd be asking for relief, you know, from that 10-foot requirement. What I had suggested previously was, we could take this dumpster, I could move it someplace in the middle of this parking row where it would comply with ordinance requirements. So either/or is acceptable to us. I liked it here because it's a little closer to the retail spaces. They're going to generate more, you know, more daily waste, let's say, than the office use would. So that's why we put it in this corner initially. Well, I already have underground recharge in the back. The underground storage is only 30% as efficient as an open hole. We don't get nearly the volume of storage in the underground system as we do in a big open hole. So in short, the answer is no. Well, that wouldn't help us. No, but unfortunately, that doesn't help us because an open hole gives us 100% of storage. An underground system only gives us, you know, 30 to 40% volume within the same space. So the most efficient way is always to dig a big hole. The underground system, because it's a pipe and then it's stone, the stone only has a certain amount, you know, much less storage than a big open hole does. And the regulations don't let us take credit for the exfiltration for the water that's actually exiting the system. So these systems are, you know, in my opinion, are three times bigger than they ever need to be, but the rules are the rules. I don't make the rules. It does adjoin commercial zone. It does adjoin commercial zone. It does adjoin commercial zone. It meets ordinance requirements for impervious cover and for landscaping, with the exception of the relief we've asked for the buffer.
What is the impervious coverage percentage?
We're at about 71%. We're 75% is permitted. Yeah, well, the drive aisle is wide enough to allow for it. The dumpster ideally would be angled so that as the garbage trucks enter, and the dumpster would be angled this way to allow the movement to be easy. And the trash pickup is done, you know, when a commercial site is done during off-hours, it's either done on a weekend or very early in the morning typically, and our client would arrange for that, and the board can make that a condition of the approval. Typically, they're done, again, they're done very early in the morning or on weekends when the sites are not occupied. This west corner where I'm pointing? Is that, well, it would have to be 10 feet from the property line. And that makes it, you know, that makes it very far from this last retail space. So my opinion was this, that was a better location for it.
Again, a building that can be scaled down just a little bit, this wouldn't be a bad one. So it's not a hard one.
Sorry. Well, we're not asking for any relief for the dumpster as proposed. We had offered to move the dumpster to try to address concern from adjoining property. So the dumpster location meets ordinance requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I'd remind the board that the dumpster's in the required buffer. So while it meets the setback from the property line, there's still relief required for the perimeter buffer. Again, as Mr. McFarland indicated, these are technical aspects, but they're the ordinance. There's a buffer required from the rear property line. So wherever it's not 20 or 25 feet, everything in there requires a variance. So I don't want that point lost, that yes, if it wasn't for the buffer, then the dumpster is compliant as to the requirements for a dumpster setback. Over the area that you're measuring the setbacks to, also requires an enhanced requirement of having a buffer on it.
Okay. Bottom of that, next to where the dumpster, those free parking spaces?
Correct.
Next question. If there was no mezzanine, if there was no space, what is the parking required?
I think you can ask Mr. McFarland that.
I agree.
Correct. But again, just as Mr. McFarland indicated correctly in his testimony, technically, the ordinance requires, and it mentions in the parking standards 20-odd times, its gross floor area. So fortunately, unfortunately, the ordinance includes the mezzanine and the basement. So if the board finds that those areas would not generate the need for parking, then you could, in theory, grant relief based upon that argument, that there's not a reasonable expectation that the mezzanine or the storage area in the basement would generate the need for parking, and that would be the proof that Mr. McFarland's offered to the board.
Right. I understand, and that's why I wanted to clarify. Question? Okay. Yeah. If it's operating, does it accommodate people?
I think the statement of operations asks for how we're going to operate it, and...
Well, I'd like to know how you're going to use it. We're getting among the argument here of, and I haven't begun to argue, I'll wait for the architect to tell me if it's a third form mezzanine.
Sure.
But occupied space is occupied space. You have occupied space. I really don't want to sit here and do the calculations on how many people we're going to be building. I can't do it. I don't want to. So I was hoping that you could tell us how many people would be in that office.
Well, I can only refer back to your ordinance, and your ordinance does have a requirement.
Okay. I'm not looking at the ordinance. I already know what the ordinance is. Okay? I'm going to look at the building code. So many people in a commercial environment, office setting, load is X. We can go put the fire marshal's hat on, say, X amount of people can be in this room for occupancy. It's on the wall. What I'm asking is for you to tell us what that is.
I can certainly make inquiry of the architect as to what the building code would require, but we don't have any of that, I don't have that at my fingertips, because again, it's not relevant to your ordinance, so I apologize for that, but it doesn't go into the parking calculations, but we can try and get you that information.
Okay. Try as you may to separate the ring from the bell. I disagree with you because parking spaces are for people. Cars carry people. So the argument is, your building is big, which parking lot is undersized. So we're trying to massage this to make this the work. So if I'm asking you how many people are in an office building, it is directly related to the parking lot. Occupancy, gross floor area, it all ties together. So try as you may, I'm just going to keep asking the question 100 different ways until we get an answer on that. Just to be clear.
Understood.
You know, that leads me to a question. On the second floor, you have, you know, a whole series of very small offices. Most of them are like 119 square feet. How many people are expected to occupy each of these offices?
Well, again, I could probably pose that question to the architect for you and try and get some building...
I was also getting that, but what is the, how many people can you put in?
Again, happy to ask the building code questions to the architect. Happy to do that. I just, again, we don't have those because unfortunately, it wasn't, it's not your ordinance, so we weren't prepared on that. I apologize.
Do you guys have any clue? 119 square feet, how many people?
I'll leave it there.
One. So I presume I got it.
Depends what kind of landlord you are.
But this line of questioning seems to be focusing on occupant load as defined by building code compared to parking need defined by your ordinance. The occupant load for, as defined by building code, is much, much different and much, much higher than the parking demand as defined by your ordinance. This application, we, you know, we're making presentations that we have certain square footage of building. We need, you know, a certain amount of parking spaces, which we can't dispute. We're asking for some relief because our, you know, big picture is that the basement and the mezzanine do not generate any need to those parking spaces. If we're going to now make this the first application ever in the history of Jackson Township, where we have to argue occupant load related to parking spaces, we're going down something that the ordinance frankly doesn't write in.
So, Mr. McFarland, I'm going to cut you off this, perhaps save yourself a little bit respectfully. I wouldn't have done that for you. But I would just make sure the board, as it, those occupant load questions are relevant, just so you have a context, that's where I disagree with Mr. McFarland, as a matter of law and of review, that those are relevant questions to the extent that anyone can answer them, because it does give the board a fuller picture of how that building is going to work. Depending on the evidence and the credibility of that evidence, as the board determines it, the board nevertheless should focus on the fact, in my opinion, that the ordinance itself, in terms of relation to building size and parking spaces, talks about gross square footage and does not address occupant.
Okay. Agreed.
Anybody have any other questions?
Go ahead. So, and, I'm not a builder, but, so the mezzanine is a secondary space that is used by the same people that are occupied.
Correct. Only tenants occupants of the building would have access to the mezzanine.
And the basement is going to be restricted only to computers and data. Am I correct?
Correct. And just to, I'll try to summarize what our client testified to last time, as best as I can, you know, I may not get it perfect, but he had made representations that he does own some other businesses as well, and he wanted to use this basement as a computer center and a data storage center for this office and for some off-site businesses as well, with the representation that it would not create a need for any additional employees, and that space would not be leasable to anybody else. So I believe that was the representations and the conditions that he had represented to last time.
As a need, is a safe space someplace that you go, or that you pass people if you want?
Correct. That's our understanding, that you're sitting in your office for three or four hours, you want to go take a break, you want to change your perspective, you want to take your laptop up to a different space, you want to go talk to somebody on a cell phone up there, that's what that space would be used for, again, only by tenants occupants of the building.
It's much like years ago when I worked, there were court yards and...
atrium, a courtyard, an open space that could be utilized by anybody in the building. That's the concept. Correct. Well, we have offered, you know, Mr. Hock offered that the applicant's willing to provide, you know, restrictions and limitations on that, hopefully to the satisfaction of the board.
I think, Mr. Chairman, again, listening, and it's certainly up to you and the board in general, I, too, I think that question would be better, the board would be better served to have the architect answer those same questions, and then what can happen is the board during its deliberation can reconcile load with the ordinance requirement of gross square footage, because that's really, at the end of the day, is I here trying to, an attempt to guide the board at least, and again, you could discount the opinion, it's ultimately the board's determination, but by, you, in an attempt to, the board should attempt to reconcile the occupancy load of the total gross square feet with the opportunity that the applicant is trying to articulate of restricting the load, so to speak, to only the tenable spaces. And then you can reconcile the credibility and the ability to do that and have the ability in terms of the ordinance to ascertain whether or not the variance is justified.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. I invite the board to lock us into that through the resolution and through any type of record notice that Mr. Gertner feels is appropriate to protect the town. We invite that, absolutely. I can just add that.
So, help me understand the calculation of the, you're at 71% of 75%, which is the maximum. The buffers and the basin in the front, is that all included in the...
The basin is a sand bottom, so that's not considered impervious. Impervious cover is buildings, parking area, sidewalks.
I understand.
So the...
What I'm talking about is, so where are you getting your, what's it, 29%? Where is that coming?
Well, we have landscape, we have lawn landscaping all around the perimeter of the site, on the side, on the back.
But aren't those buffers?
They're buffers, but they're not impervious cover. They're grass landscape.
Correct.
Correct.
So what I'm getting at is that it seems like the whole project is using every square inch that's possible on this site, and this is not, as Mr. Fleming said, this isn't New York, this is Jackson, this is, you know, Tree Town, USA, and we're getting none of that here. We're not getting any landscaping, we're getting blacktop and concrete in a building. Now, the building looks very nice. I like it, but again, my opinion, too much on, I can put too much on the work.
Graham, are there additional trees we could offer to the board, or additional items we could suggest at this point?
We, as I like to say, everything is possible. You know, we could certainly enhance the landscaping plan, except for the items that we've been, you know, we've been discussing, the, you know, the street trees and whatnot. The plan is compliant, you know, with the intent and purpose of the ordinance. I think we have a plan prepared that is going to supplement and work nicely with the building that's proposed, but if more is better in the eyes of those who are judging it, we'll put more landscaping on the plan. But we do satisfy the ordinance requirement for impervious cover. We're not asking for any relief related to that particular item. Well, that's the discussion that we're having, and the board gets to make their decision whether they think our argument is valid or not, or whether they think we're totally crazy. We think it's a valid argument that those spaces are not gonna generate additional demand, they're kind of bonus spaces that are proposed in the building. If the board's not comfortable with it, at the end of the day, they're not gonna approve the application, they're not gonna approve that part of the application. We still have two more witnesses to testify, and hopefully we'll maybe get a couple opinions swayed, but this is why we're talking about it.
Sorry, I'm really just pressing, why is amenity space any different than other things in the building? We've never had an applicant come in and say, this bathroom space, you know, it's not considered...
Right, and we're not excluding bathroom space, we're excluding, again, the amenity space, which we believe it's kind of a, you know, it's a bonus space for the people using rooms, it's akin to, as Mr. Ricardi said, like an atrium space in an office that can be used by the occupants to go take a break, to get away from their office, to go work on a laptop or a cellphone, but at the end of the day, if the board's not comfortable with it, we'd have to come up with a revised plan.
Are you really saying that the idea of the ordinance of 200 square feet shouldn't apply necessarily to your space?
Well, I'm saying for this particular application, we're making a presentation that says that space, because it has unique character and use, and the applicant is willing to put restrictions and limitations on it that would run with its building and with this land in perpetuity, that the board and the town will get the protection that they should have in making a decision like that. That's the discussion, you know, argument that we're generally trying to make. The statement of operations in the first sentence, it is proposed to develop the site as a commercial office/retail building for multiple tenants as depicted on the site development plan as prepared by PDS. So, my understanding is that the building would be for multiple tenants, it could possibly be one tenant if he was fortunate enough to find one guy who wants the entire building, but in the absence of that happening, the board, the building would be available for multiple tenants. Whether that's one office space, two office spaces, half the building, that's, you know, A, not, in my opinion, not regulated by this board or the ordinance, and to be determined by the client, by real estate market and by economic conditions. I don't believe that was ever discussed. I anticipated multiple tenants, unless my client tells me something totally different or he wants to represent something different, my understanding is a building is set up for multiple tenants. The number is not determined.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Yes? Just a couple things. Going back to, I guess, the initial comments regarding the basement, there is some data indicated it's gonna be utilized for data storage or data area, I'm assuming servers, you know, that type of computer, you know, equipment, and also it was an indication that the client or the owner provides these services for people off-site?
I think the testimony was, his other business is off-site.
Okay, so I'm assuming that that data area, those servers, they're gonna need to be maintained somewhere or by somebody?
Yes, and my understanding, we'll get into this further with the architect and the owner, if we have to, that there will be no employees working then, no permanent employees stationed in that basement.
But it would make for a good IT department.
But there won't be any.
Okay, but it could.
But there won't be any.
Fair enough.
But to answer your question, today's building age, several rooms are lighted out operations.
Understand, I'm just going back to like Dr. Campbell, nature pours a vacuum, it's gonna be built somewhere. The only comment goes back to, I guess, the whole parking issue and the landscaping. I think these internal islands, Mr. McFarland, I think he testified that they provide adequate circulation, it's safe and meets the intent of the ordinance, but if the ordinance requires 10, why not make it 10, or why is 3 better? And if you made them 10, what would happen to the parking that you would have available on site, and wouldn't that enhance the visual aspect as far as additional green area, especially in the front? I understand, we don't wanna put street trees or so much trees in the front to block the building, but if you made those four-foot islands 10, it would provide for additional landscape.
It would provide for additional landscaping, my testimony was that the safety islands of the size that we have are suitable and satisfy the intent and purpose of the ordinance, which is primarily to provide for adequate circulation and separation of drive lanes and from parking stalls. That was my testimony.
Why would the ordinance specify 10?
I didn't write the ordinance, my opinion is that the ordinance requirement is excessive. I don't think 10 feet is required to satisfy proper operation and function of site safety and circulation.
But would provide...
If I wrote the ordinance, I wouldn't make it 10 feet, if you wanna ask. If I hadn't written the ordinance, it wouldn't say 10 feet, if you wanted that line of questioning.
You have to rewrite a number of ordinances, because I think that's pretty much a standard across the board, 10-foot islands. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we move on to Mr. Tokarski, I just have an exhibit, it's a matter of public record, it's a subdivision map that Mr. McFarland was referencing as to the adjacent neighborhood and the open space lot, it's on file with the Ocean County Clerk, I think we're up to exhibit A17, just wanna submit that into the record, so we can have that as a matter of record. And again, for the board's identification, that's a public document recorded with the county clerk. So, moving along, I'd like to have Mr. Richard Tokarski, or Tokarkey sworn and qualified if I may.
Mr. Tokarkey, kindly raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, and then through the chairman, he will vordere you regarding your qualifications.
Sure, it's Richard Tokarski, spelled T-O-K-A-R-S-K-I, with the firm of Tokarski Millman Architects located in Wall, New Jersey. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich, you, your office took over this project since the last time we were here, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you've had an opportunity to review and evaluate the plans?
I have.
You've made some changes?
Yes.
You've signed those plans under your license, then we've submitted them, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think before us, we have exhibit A16, that's before the board, could you give us, we'll start from the outside, work our way in, could you tell us a little bit about the building design itself, the aesthetic features, and the materials and finishes used?
Sure. The building is designed as really a statement building, there's a lot of architectural elements to the building, as you can see on the front elevation, you have a huge expanse of glazing on the front of the building, which is essentially a three-story atrium-type space, and complementing the large glazed areas here, we also have windows above the three retail with the office and mezzanine above that. The exterior of the building, as you see here outlining this, this is all aluminum composite panels, which is a very expensive material to use here. In between, the composite, we're using a stucco finish, so there's a variety of materials which are, you know, are expensive materials or high-quality materials that are gonna lend this building to be a statement building for Jackson Township.
And based on those design elements chosen by the owner, this is not an inexpensive building to build, correct?
No, this is a fairly expensive building.
So, per square foot, he's paying a lot here?
Yes, he is.
And again, that is really to enhance the aesthetics and the statement it makes from the road and surrounding properties?
Correct, you know, the owner is going to plan to occupy this building, that's his intent, that he's moving in, he's making a statement for his insurance company and brokerage firm, this is kind of his statement, and it's gonna be his headquarters for his business as he comes to Jackson.
But having heard the board, I think it would behoove people, so there's already some differential in the testimony between Mr. Riker's question of, who is occupying the building?
The design intent is that the owner will be the owner/occupant of the building.
Yeah, as to the office space.
As to the office space, the three retail spaces will be leased out.
No.
Correct, it's a monthly tenant building, and I think with any building that anybody owns, you can't stop somebody from selling it or leasing it out, and yeah, right, but correct, but the design intent at this point is that it's designed for an owner/occupant. If this was gonna be a leased space, they would not be spending this kind of money on the materials and design of the building.
And I would think it's also designed to be a professional building, but however, if next year it could also be stayed home, and that space may just be an office.
Let's hope we're not home next year.
Right, yeah, could be.
I see, and again, you incorporate a lot of glass that allows a lot of natural light to come in the building?
Yes, in terms of the design of the building, you know, some of the green, sustainable design elements of the building are large expenses of glass which allow for daylighting versus utilizing electric lighting, we also are planning some solar on the roof to handle the, at least a minimum of the site amenity, the site lighting on the space, and also we're including the EV charging stations as part of this.
And so, the solar panels, you can't see them obviously in this renting, they'd be hidden on the roof?
Correct, you won't see them from anywhere but on the roof.
Okay, and you'll get into the floor plans, but that's a good depiction of, it's basically a two-and-a-half, three-story, open sort of entryway, right?
Here, that's basically a three-story entrance into it.
So, again, it's just a lot of sort of open aesthetic space, not usable space, because it's open to below.
Correct.
All right, so if we could, I guess, go to exhibit A9, I think it's the basement plan, and we'll start there, work our way up. Could you give us an overview of what we see here?
Although Graham McFarland went through this already, this large hatched-in area represents unexcavated space, so that will be slab-on-grade area. The basement area over here consists of a below-grade level, the intent of it was to have some data storage, which you see here, there's also a large demand for record storage, files, those kind of elements which would occupy some of these larger, open spaces. You also see mechanical spaces down here, the elevator, stair towers, so the mechanicals for the building are gonna occupy the lower level as well as a lot of storage and basically file storage, it's not the intent, and that anybody would be working down here, there's no windows, would be a miserable place to work, the intent is that it's, you know, storage and mechanicals for the building.
And this area meets all the fire codes, including egress, I see a couple points of access there.
Yes, we have two means of egress out of it, accessibility with the elevator, and it will meet all building codes.
We can go to the next exhibit, it's A10.
So, this represents the first floor plan, the office space on the left side of the building, we all notice in the front, there's a large grand entrance space, when we're talking about the design of the building, this isn't a typical, get as many people shoved into a building as possible, it's a statement building, you know, this large area in the front is over 1,500 square feet, there may be one or two people stationed there as receptionists, so we're dedicating a lot of space to statement and grandeur, where, you know, this isn't designed to have desks and cubicles in it, it's a large, open foyer space, may have one or two receptionists in it, then we have office space in the back area, as well as some restrooms here, mailroom up front, and then also on the right-hand side, we have three retail spaces with some office storage space in the back, each of those is currently showing a single toilet, as those retail spaces are leased out, they're gonna have to have tenant fit-outs, so they're gonna come back to the building department, which they're gonna have to show what's going into that space, the bathroom requirements, the parking requirements, and at that time, you'll be able to review, you know, the sufficient parking for those retail uses.
All right, if we can move on to the next level, A11, I believe this?
So, this is the second floor office space, as you can see, there's a large, open area in the middle, around the exterior, there's private offices, these offices are intended to only have one occupant, it's an insurance business where each agent would have their own individual private office, there's some communal open space in the middle, and then there's a large conference room, I believe you alluded to it earlier on in the testimony of conference, the prior testimony of the conference hall, this is really just a conference room for the employees within the office.
And a large section of that floor is open to below, that's not actually space.
Correct, this area up here is open to below, which is over 1,500 square feet.
We could go to A12?
This is a depiction of the mezzanine, as you can see, the mezzanine wraps three sides of the perimeter, this is all open space in here, coming down to here, this whole front is open space, so I know there were some questions in the prior hearing, I went back and reviewed it, there was a lot of questions regarding the mezzanine, I'm very familiar with mezzanines, a mezzanine in this type of building, in building code, a type 1, type 2 building with sprinkler system allows you to do up to half of the floor area of the space that is open to below, this is not even half, it's, right now, we're showing 2,300 square feet, which would be less than half of the open space below. There's also two means of egress, stair here, stair here, which meets the remoteness requirement for those stairs, I know there's a lot of talk about the mezzanine, I don't, in the design of it, this mezzanine, the intent is, you know, as they've stated before, is additional amenity space, it's, you know, not a required space, the reason that the owner is, wants this space is to enhance the amenities for his employees, it's, you know, break space, just another place to go when you're working at the day, you know, throughout the day, it's a non-s simultaneous use for the office space, and that's why we're arguing and presenting the fact that, you know, this wouldn't drive parking demand as it is a non-s simultaneous use, it's above and beyond an amenity to attract employees, and as we know, in this environment, it's getting harder and harder to find quality employees and having those types of amenities, and, you know, the Googles of the world have ping-pong tables and basketball courts, all these other spaces that make it an enjoyable place to work, and that's the intent of this mezzanine.
And we have it laid out, just a typical depiction of sort of some club chairs and cocktail tables, is that...
Correct, it's just some seating groups, the other thing, there were some questions as far as how many occupants could be in here, for this mezzanine, the building code uses 150 square feet per occupant. So... So, the 2,352 square feet that the mezzanine... so the twenty-three hundred fifty-two square feet that the mezzanine currently is divided by a hundred and fifty equals sixteen occupants. And those would be the same sixteen occupants that occupy this offices down below.
They would all be employees that have a fixed home, a workspace in the building, and they just come up here for, like Graham said, a change of scenery.
Yeah, it would have different types of seating, you know, couch seating, you know, small impromptu meetings.
Now, when you're up there, what's that space going to feel like? It you're looking at over a cavernous space, right? It's like a balcony, basically, just to give the board an idea?
Sure. The perimeter of the bat of mezzanine has a glass rail, so it's very open to this space below. And really, it's you're going to have visual access all the way to this three-story space. So the light coming in through here along with the windows around the perimeter is going to be a very light and bright space.
And imagine it'll be a bit of a noisy space. I mean, you're you're in a large space. It's not going to be quiet, quiet house up there, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So so really, this is it's not, again, it's not intended to be in order to function well as a workspace.
That's correct.
And then I think we hit all those items. The board had some additional questions, I think, about occupancy load. Are there any specific rooms or areas that we can address or hit those that was an important point for the board?
Sure. I think you mentioned that it was going to be one person per office on this second floor. Correct?
Correct.
Anthony, can we go back one exhibit to eleven again?
So counting them up, there's twelve offices up there.
Mr. McFarlane, you had a question. These offices, these one hundred nineteen square foot offices, they're actually building walls?
Yes. Correct. Right. Yeah, they're walled offices. Yeah, I think my client would have no issue with that. Building code-wise, you could do sixteen. We could obviously put a posted occupancy limit on stairs going, you know, on the stairs going up to that space. I saw that after the fact, too. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, maybe we can add some clarity to that. Basically, a kitchenette would be a staging area if there was a conference and they were preparing coffee, donuts, whatever, for the people in the conference room. That's what the kitchenette would be used for. The break room is really for the employees to keep their lunches or you know, coffee and creamers in. Yep.
Yes, thank you. I'm just trying to reconcile a few themes. The part of the foyer area was designed to be to put forth some grandeur, I believe you. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. During the design, were you ever charged with designing to either the word event or a synonym for the word event? And I'll explain why.
No, and I'd also clarify that I'm not the original designer of the building. I'm taking over it. I have had extensive conversations with the owner and getting, you know, a head wrapped around the building and the process. So we have talked about the design elements of that, and it was never discussed or envisioned that there'd be any type of events going on here.
Because it looks like a nice place for an event. If you have this this sense of grandeur like you're mentioning, and I'm working here in a hundred and nineteen square feet, I was trying to realize how small that is, how big that is or how small it is. It's a little over twice the size of a prison cell. And I looked it up just to see if I was right or wrong. So I just, you know, that's why I'm trying to reconcile that, because if you're having an event, glass is gorgeous, parking, maybe there's off-site, maybe valet, right? You can have appetizers up in the mezzanine, right? And this conference area, which is one thousand two hundred fifty-nine square feet would, could have been, I don't know, ten offices. But you're making it a conference room. Okay. I'm trying to reconcile this two X prison cell space for somebody within that four-wall. And why would they not be somewhat resentful of this grandeur foyer that has a receptionist and a desk? And all of this atrium space that's not utilized. That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking you about the event, because glass is gorgeous. Come in, nice entrance. You have areas where, for example, in the facilities that are privacy rooms. Perhaps they're fitting rooms too, perhaps they're prep rooms, you know. Reconcile the grandeur piece with the size of the well, I don't want to be labor the term, but just reconcile it because it strikes me as a good event site. And if that's the case, if it's not the case, that's why I'm putting this on the record. So there is a record, because it seems like a really nice event area. You could have your, you know, like I mentioned, the mezzanine is a nice place to go. You have this conference room, which is twelve hundred square feet. But then you have these very tiny areas for that the human condition is supposed to thrive in. Right? All day. And all of this tremendous, beautiful, open space that is just just outside their their doorknob, right? Help me with that.
Sure. Maybe I can explain some of that. Part of the design aspect of it is, you know, these grand spaces, the mezzanine level, is that, you know, people don't enjoy sitting in their desk locked up in a room all day long. I myself, I have an office. As many times as I can, I grab my phone. I walk out, you know, back when it was warm out, I'd go outside and walk the parking lot. I'd go into a conference room. I go in my front. I don't like being locked in a room. I like being able to take a phone call, go someplace else in the building, move around. You see it in terms of office design these days. There's, you know, stand-sit desks, because people know it's bad to sit all day long in the same location. So there's stand-sit desks. People want to get out and move around and be able to access different types of spaces to work in. And that's part of the area, part of the reason that we have, you know, a large conference room is that people who are in the offices will have meetings gathered in the conference room. They may go in the amenity of the mezzanine space. There's a large floor opening in the middle. It encourages, you know, coming out into different spaces, having different types of meeting, flexible situations. And then when you have to have a private call with a client, you can go into your closed office and have that private conversation that you need to have.
Okay. And just to be clear, I'm not saying that events are good, bad, or indifferent. I'm just, that's what it it strikes me as as one of the what it seems to be designed for in some way. I just have another question on the height. Is the height still going above and beyond the the, is it still exceeding the height with the pertinences on it or no?
No, we've made some changes to bring the height of the roof to thirty-five feet, which is the compliant height limit for this. We're not asking for any kind of height variance.
So, okay, so with, so now you brought that down?
Yes, I, you know, I did shrink the building a little bit as part of my changes. And I also wanted to, you know, just address your previous comment and attest to the fact that we've never discussed it as an event-type space. It hasn't been designed that way, and it's never been discussed or anticipated that we'd be having events here.
Any reason why not? Is it not allowed in the zoning? Mr. Peters, do you know? Events. You may have a client, you may have a client event, you may have.
It's a highway commercial zone. If you're talking about a catering hall or a club, I don't believe either of those are permitted uses in the HC zone.
Okay. All right. I was just trying to, I'm just trying to reconcile the very small place for the employees or for the staff and this this rather perhaps underutilized grand foyer piece.
Correct. I think the only event that he would like to have is a grand opening. Yeah. I mean, I think in terms of, you know, I did not design the coat room. However, you know, in my office, I designed a coat, you know, large coat closet for my office. I don't like to see jackets laying over, you know, chairs rolled across an office hang. So we've created a place where people come in in the morning, they hang their coats, and they're not in view of everybody else. It actually with the building code for this type of building would be have to go over half to be considered a floor. We've through some tape. If it's eight, if it's non-combustible type one or two construction, and it's also fully fire-suppressed as a building, you can go up to half of the area below it with a mezzanine, and it doesn't count towards floor area. Okay, if I get a, you know, I'd like to address your comments. I'll start off with the large open space, you know, surrounded by the private offices. We haven't done a furniture design layout of this yet. It will be occupied office space. How it's configured is imagined is it's going to have different kind of desk scenarios where you may have, you know, some areas of cubicles, maybe some communal tables, or maybe desk space that hasn't been designed in terms of, you know, the furniture layout. We did put some tables with four chairs on, this kind of placeholders on the mezzanine, just to kind of show you the use that it was going to be meeting space and not cubicles and desks around there. I understand your, you know, concern. I think there would be, my client would be open to conceding, you know, if you feel the mezzanine is too large, we want to have we kind of limit the number of people. Maybe we can reduce the size of that mezzanine to make you more comfortable that, you know, we have fifteen or sixteen people up there, and we don't have large, you know, excessive floor space. Maybe we can reduce some of that mezzanine to make you feel more comfortable with that. And I would, I would say that, you know, we, this is our intent in terms of occupancy, that people will be on the mezzanine. Sure. It's not intended that they would be in office scenario, sitting there all day and would add additional people. I totally agree that, you know, as an occupant, you're in the building, you're utilizing the space. There should be parking for that. As an occupant, if I'm here on the mezzanine, I still came in one car, and it's not driving, that's not driving the parking requirement. You know, we're adding amenities to a space which, you know, maybe the ordinance didn't anticipate. The ordinance anticipates an average, and that's why they look at parking as, you know, two, you know, two hundred square feet of office use is for a car. They figured that, you know, people aren't going to cram office workers into any tighter space than that. And it's it's average. It's made to accommodate the bathrooms, the stairs. It's an average. This building goes above and beyond average and says, hey, you know, we can, you can have this office building without the mezzanine, it still function and have it. We want to give our employees something nice, a place to go to. It doesn't, you know, unless we loaded this up with cubicles, it's not going to create any more employees. And what we're trying to do is come to terms and make you comfortable with the fact that it's an amenity space and not office space. It's going to be built out with cubicles and desks. And however, you know, we can meet you on that. That's what we're looking to do here.
You guys have been very eloquent in your arguments. You're trying to still put a five-pound building on a four-pound piece of property. You said it twenty-three different ways. Graham has done just as well as you have, selling your customers' idea. You're trying to put too much building on too small a lot, and we're pushing back. It's that simple. We've been arguing now for an hour and a half. You know what the issue is. Why can't we solve it?
Let me ask a follow-up question then. Rich, is there any way we could reduce that mezzanine and keep the architectural benefit, or at least a part of it, and address what the board's concerned about here?
Sure. I mean, what I would propose to do, if we can go to the
Mezzanine.
It's not the mezzanine. It's not the mezzanine, the mezzanine is 2,600 feet. You're already short of parking, you're already encouraging on your setbacks. You have too much building on too small a lot. It's not the mezzanine, it's the building, keep the mezzanine, make the building smaller. Can I, I don't know how, we've been pretty plain about it.
May I ask it a different way? And Mr. Fleming, correct me if I missed the point. What is the support, as Mr. Clea indicated, from an architectural perspective? What is the support for the design or part or the waiver for the drive aisles? Going from the 10 foot requirement in the ordinance to the fourth, to the four or six feet? Well, because for, let me just articulate and this again, I articulate a wrong point, strike, strike it. But I believe a way to get to Mr. Fleming's point is if you design, by definition, if you designed only, if you designed 10 foot drive, uh, drive aisles, you would lose, what's, you designed six, right? Ordinance calls 10, you lose four feet somewhere, which by definition, you would have to lose some parking spaces along the way, correct?
Correct.
So what size building would meet parking requirements? If you did, if the board did not grant the waiver for the, for the 10 foot aisles? If you know, is that, is that a way to get, Mr. Fleming, is that a way, wait, wait, I'm not the person. I'm trying to help clarify a question of a board member, Mr. Fleming, excuse me. Is that a way to get to your point, is that question? Okay.
I would say in, in, in general terms, of course, the, the parking requirement is one space per 200 square. The plan right now, we have 102 parking spaces. So let's just say if we were to amend the plan, very simply, we ended up with 100 parking spaces at one per 200, 20,000 square. So if you had a plan that was 20,000 square feet of gross floor area as defined by your ordinance and had 100 parking spaces, that would meet ordinance requirements. Right now. Right, right now, I had tabulated for you previously that your office in retail is 19247. When we added the office retail mezzanine and basements were at 26,000 square. That's correct. If, if we have had to include the basement and mezzanine as. As requirement for. So basically, if we eliminated the basement and the mezzanine, we'd have the same size building and be compliant.
So I think an hour and a half ago, we said that there's too much on this piece of property. Here we are back to that.
Understood, and that, and that's why I was trying to pick up on Mr. Riker's comments. He had suggested modifying the mezzanine, so, you know, we would like to maybe explore that with the board. As, maybe that gets us where we need to be, maybe it doesn't, but I'm just following up on his, his comments.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I think.
I'm not, yeah, I agree with you, it's not so much the mezzanine, I mean, you're, you're just massaging it to make it, to make the numbers. And it still comes down to the footprint of the building is too large for, as it exists now, for that piece of land. Because you're not providing enough parking, there's, you know, you're requesting variances, it's just too much.
He's working first floor of the far right interior and make that under building parking. That would be perhaps, but not parking to satisfy our service. I love it, I think the mezzanine is a wonderful design, I love it. The building is beautiful, I think it will be good for that space. I'm very happy to see it's an architect, I mean, it's not square, center block building, thank you very much. But there are things you could do, maybe to make it sound more like by, I don't know. Or by the whole floor, or consider putting some under building parking there, which is very popular. It doesn't get snow, doesn't get rain, and, and I know this building I'm having on building now. And it's, it's not on track, it's, it's still, and it's a good design. So there are, it's satisfying, so we can, look at the people who are relaxing, I'd say, we, we satisfied, I, we done over this.
You know, I agree with Ms. Campbell, I think the building is beautiful. I think I like the mezzanine, I like the whole concept of the whole project. However, it's too big for that piece. Something has to give somewhere and I don't think just eliminating or making the mezzanine smaller satisfies that. It's just.
Anthony, if we, if we could go back to the first floor, I think it was a 10, and we could follow up on Ms. Campbell's comments.
Jail cells. The locks are on the inside, not the outside.
Well, the mezzanine, you know, you have your jail cells, but mezzanine is your yard.
Mr. Riker, if I could just pick up on what you're saying and tie in what Ms. Campbell had mentioned. Rather than redesign the whole building, what, what if we were to take that far end retail unit, convert that to parking underneath like you're indicating? We could pick up a lot of parking, which would seem to be a main point, but, but leave the basic design itself. Again, following up on what Ms. Campbell said, that sounds like something that's workable.
Yeah, it's easily achievable.
And will get you a lot more parking, if that's something in concept that you're like. Yeah, no, and, and, right. Like a false facade with the parking behind it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good solution.
We could do that.
Yeah, I think we can definitely accommodate that.
So. Okay, if that's, if that's something that you think will work, we could certainly revise the plan and show you that on paper.
Mr. Piddy.
But I just, as we get to redesigning the plan or making revisions, I'm going to sound like a nerdy engineer and I have either the good or bad fortune to be married to an architect, so I should probably be able to read these plans. But between sheets, A3, the second floor, and A4, the mezzanine or third floor. If I look at A3, the second floor, the area where the conference room, the bathrooms, executive office two, the kitchenette and the break room are.
Anthony, that's, that's A11, I believe. On our exhibit sheet.
A11?
A11 exhibit, but sheet A3 of the plan, you're correct.
So if I go to sheet A4 of the plans, which is the atrium, what's going on above the second floor of the two bathrooms and the conference room? There, there's a line on the plan, but doesn't tell me, I know where the mezzanine is, you look down one floor from the mezzanine to the second floor in that open workspace, then the 1,500 square foot area, there's, that's a three story atrium. What happens between the second floor and the third floor? For that area above the second floor bathrooms and conference room, what, what's, it's 3,000 of a 10,000 square foot building. I'm not quite, what, what's going on there?
Basically, there's a wall surrounding that, so from the, the offices on the second floor up to the roof of the third floor, you basically have a sheet rock wall, you'd have drop ceilings hung way down below and it would basically be interstitial space, it'd be.
So it's blank space.
It's blank space with.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure as we go through this, because again, as to some of the board members' comments, if it's there and, and you build a ceiling in the second floor or floor on the third floor, at some point, we're concerned that it, it needs to be clear that that area isn't being utilized.
Yes, there's no floor structure planned for that area.
Okay, but there's a ceiling for the second floor.
Yes, there'll be acoustic drop ceilings on the second floor, it'll just be open.
Thank you.
Yeah, listening to a lot of testimony. When it came up that the square footage for the mezzanine is not including the total square footage, to me, that seemed kind of disingenuous. What's going to prevent like a project team from going upstairs and having a meeting upstairs? What's to prevent a client from being walked upstairs to the mezzanine and have a private conference? It's going to be used for business purposes. It's not going to be you just go up there and sit down or have lunch or something like that. To me, it should be included in the square footage of the business. Sure, it's not an office, but if we made a temporary office, you bring your laptop up there and you sit there in the afternoon instead of in your two times a prison cell. It's business.
I agree with you 100%.
Nothing has, to me, nothing's a disabuse me of the notion that it should be part of the square footage of the business in there. You know, you say what you want, but if, if people that are in the business go up to that floor, they're going to use this for business.
I agree with you and the intent is that it is a business use. What we're trying to clarify is that it's a non simultaneous use. The same people who are using the second floor are the same people who are going to go up and have a meeting on the third floor. So it would not create parking load. It's usable space as per building code, it's occupiable space, it's business and as far as the building code goes. From a zoning standpoint, we're saying that it, it doesn't create any more cars, any more trips coming into it because the same person who drove that car in, who's in the office, is going to use that mezzanine. It doesn't, it's, there's no increased occupant load for that mezzanine as it relates to parking.
You know, I understand your, your opinion of it, but it's still square footage.
Well, and I think we're trying to accommodate the board on that.
And that's all we can deal with, so definitely, thank you.
And when we agree, that's what we're trying to get some more parking, work with the board here.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief follow up to his question. So, so you're maintaining that you won't be using it for a subtype of, for example, a subscription or program or office membership program where, where someone could use that mezzanine as, as a stop zone and also use the conference area and do their work? Because that's a model out there as well, that's not a model that's being considered?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I would like to open it up for public comment. Someone in the audience wishes to comment about this application, please step up to the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a traffic expert, just want to let you know.
Yeah, I think we want to hear, I didn't realize.
Again, one more witness.
Yeah, if we, you can just hold on just a moment.
Thank you. And as that Scott Kennel from McDonough Ray Traffic Associates be sworn.
Kenel, thanks for raising your hand, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you have presented to the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and briefly, to the chairman, your qualifications?
Yes, Scott Kennel, K E N N E L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manalapan, Man, Manalapan, Manuswan. First, but as the board knows, I've testified before this board on many occasions. I have over 40 years of experience in traffic and transportation planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your, your office conducted a traffic study on this site, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you studied the impacts of not only the egress out onto the county line road, but also the adjacent signal intersection, correct?
That's correct.
And what were your findings?
Yes, and again, it goes to a report dated March 25, 2021. And as is typical, the, the initial phase is to establish existing base conditions, take an inventory of traffic conditions in the area as well as traffic volumes. When we had published this report, the data was available was intersection counts at Bartley and County Line Road in, in 2016. Given time that passed, I reviewed data that was conducted by NJ DOT approximately half a mile to the west in 2016 as well as September and 2019. And it showed that, okay, by 2019, there was an increase in traffic. We adjusted those volumes that from 2016 by 10%. I'll tell the board also that because of another project in area, we conducted counts in December of 2021 at that intersection of Bartley Road and County Line Road and found that they were still approximately 10% lower than what we'd used as our adjusted traffic volumes in the report that's dated March 25 of 2021. As far as traffic generation, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual is consulted and the mix of uses that being retail and office during the morning peak hour generates 33 to 35 trips. And in the afternoon, when the retailer has a higher traffic generation activity, the, it's projected to be approximately 80 trips during the PM peak hour. Basically, we assigned traffic to the area roadway network with 15% of them oriented to and from the north on Bartley Road, 50% to and from the east on County Line Road, and 35% to the west. Consistent with Ocean County Protocol, we considered a build year of 2031. And in analyzing the, the intersection, first of all, the site driveway, the site driveway operate level service B. And again, the added benefit with this site being located as close to Bartley Road as it is, the traffic signal itself at Bartley Road provides platoons and gaps so that movements exiting the site are enhanced. And again, that's why you end up with a level service B. As far as the intersection of County Line Road and Bartley Road, it currently operates at level service B and it'll continue to operate at a level service B, B as in boy. You've heard testimony before where the, the target threshold is level service C to D, so the overall level service is better than that target level of C to D levels of level service. And, and again, just to qualify, as far as traffic leaving the site and having to go back to the east, they would make a U-turn at the traffic signal down by the shop right. And obviously, traffic coming in from the west that wants to access the site, they'd make a U-turn at the Bartley Road Jug Handle. So as far as the site access and the intersection of Bartley Road, they're projected to operate level service B while within acceptable traffic engineering parameters. I guess the next thing I'll talk about is parking, which we've had extensive discussion on parking. All I'll say is that the, as far as the two different types of uses, there, there is a, on a small level, but there is a shared parking phenomenon, because with the office space, their peak activity generally is the middle of the day from nine-thirty to three-thirty, four o'clock, where the retailer's peak parking demand generally is late afternoon to early evening and on the weekends. So there is, albeit small, but there will be a shared parking phenomena with the two types of uses. And also, generally speaking, in, in the industry standard of for office developments is parking spaces at four per thousand. So for those reasons, it's my opinion and, and the prior testimony has on the use of the mezzanine and the, and the basement, that a hundred and two parking spaces would be adequate. Albeit, I understand that the board's concerned and we're going back and I guess look at the plan so that we have a better parking ratio to floor area, gross floor area at the end of the day. So I just want to put that on the record as my thoughts as far as the parking relates to this site.
So that, that alternate use between the residential and the office, that, that does form the basis or justification to assist the board in granting some relief to the parking requirements here?
Yes, it does. I mean, again, I haven't quantified what that is, but there is, there is a shared parking.
Yet, but it certainly goes into, into the calculations. And then just to summarize your, your testimony, this site's impact on adjacent road raises is basically de minimis and not detrimental, is that correct?
That's my testimony.
Thank you.
I'm just going to fight back with you a little bit. If your peak afternoon hour is eighty, at a hundred and two parking spaces, you have eighty people leaving in one hour. So is it ten before that hour, eighty that hour, and ten after that hour?
They.
How do you have a hundred and two spaces, a hundred and eighty of them even one hour?
Again, ba- based on for office use, for example, it's, it's not as if we're, we have a three M plant where everybody leaves at three o'clock. People have flexible hours.
Your testimony was eighty people in peak hour.
I had eighty people inbound and outbound.
So eighty people in an hour in a hundred and two spaces.
There would be, during that time period, it's projected because they have a retail use, which then would have inbound traffic as a result, in conflict to the office, which would have exiting traffic. So in the, in the PM, there'd be, we're projecting thirty-one vehicles entering the site and forty-eight vehicles exiting the site. So again, just based on the nature of office uses and employees that can arrive into a site from seven to ten and then also then leave anywhere from three-thirty to six. Unless this was a, a three M plant or some type of industrial use like that where they have hard start and end times, you don't get that where you, you had that loading of, of employees leaving at one time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Way in, you've heard the testimony, but we have a little bit of discrepancy between the site law, the interpretation of the site law. And Mr. Peters feels one way, and Mr. McFarland feels another, as a traffic expert.
Well, yes, as, as Mr. McFarland testified, he had shown the site triangle easements as dictated by the Ocean County Planning Board. I agree with Mr. Peters that, again, the sight lines are not critical looking to the west as they are to the, to the east as people are exiting the site. So again, Ernie is correct as it relates to that, and Graham was testifying as to what is typically required by Ocean County Planning Board.
And Mr. Chairman, I, just again, speaking with Graham, i- if, if the county backs off that and agrees with Mr. Peters, we could put some more trees in, but I don't, I don't think we know that right now is the problem. We're ha- we're happy to work with the board professionals to accomplish that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, Mr. Kennel, you had indicated sort of in testimony, your opinions about shared parking, which I generally don't take exception to, but you didn't actually prepare any written study regarding that since your March twenty-fifth report.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Real quick, Mr. Kennel, the issue of the internal islands. If, and I'm, I'm going to assume that you agree with Mr. McFarland that it provides safety circulation and all that, but if you can do it with a four-foot island, why would the ordinance require ten?
I can't answer that. I mean, I, I agree with Mr. McFarland where the islands define the travel ways. Better define it than just having striping at the end of parking modules. But as far as four feet, six feet, or ten feet, I don't have an answer.
But, but you would suggest that there should be reasonable curb radii to allow for vehicles to circulate around those islands?
I do.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I would like to open it up for public comment. Please step up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is, sorry, my name is.
Hang on, up, thank you, sir. Thank you for raising your red hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Charles De Pasquale, D E P A S Q U A L E, two Lancaster Way, Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning board members. In listening to all of the testimony tonight from the applicant, I'd like to make my comments concerning the site plan. In particular, the rear property line, as it is impacted by the proposed site plan, the buffer zones, landscaping, refuse dumpster that is shown there, as well as screening. I did submit a comments, which I believe the planning board members have seen, I believe the applicant has seen also. And if that's the case, I do know that this evening, the applicant did make reference to the refuse containers, that they would be amenable to relocating the container from where it is currently shown. That, that I believe has to be worked out in terms of where that would be. I believe they also indicated that they would provide site fencing, privacy fencing. These are two things which I commented on also in the comments I submitted, and I appreciate that also. One question I have concerning that is, is the site fencing, privacy fencing that they're proposing the same as that is shown on the west, the western property line? That does show the privacy fencing.
So that's a question.
Yes, we, we propose the same fencing as is proposed on the west side.
Okay, that's fine. So one thing that there seems to be a conflict with and which I did not hear about was landscaping or any type of tree planting along that rear property line. The isometric, which, Mr. Chairman, you've made reference to earlier on, shows very heavy greenery, landscaping, tree planting in the front, which the applicant indicated actually is not there, but also it shows it in the rear of the property line. That's precisely what I'm recommending be planted there for a couple of reasons. One for privacy purposes, but the other reason is, is that the applicant seems to be relying on a piece of property that they neither own nor control, and that's Lot Nine, in terms of buffering and screening. And that is owned by the homeowner association. And I think that if you look at the isometric, it looks terrific in terms of the landscaping and the tree planting and screening, but part of the submission that they have made includes what's called a landscaping and tree safe plan. And if I'm looking at this correctly, in the buffer that they are required to provide, there are three trees that are shown. So my question is, which of the two is actually going to be provided? The isometric screening in the back or the three trees that are shown on the landscape and tree safe plan? Big difference. The reason is, is that should the HOA decide at some point to modify or change the screening and the landscaping that they have on their property, it could impact the view coming right into the site, especially if there are only three, three trees planted in the buffer area. So that is my question, which, which of the two, the isometric or the landscape and tree planting, tree saving plan is, is actually going to be done?
Anthony, if you could find the, the exhibit that's the landscape plan. Okay, then, exhibit number.
Landscape and tree saving.
Part of the primary site plan, one of the sheets.
Oh, you know what, that's not part of this. It's not, that's part of the ones that, that you lost though, right? Anyway, our, our plan, our landscape plan submitted, we have to do a landscape and tree safe plan, so we have to identify any trees over four-inch caliber on the site. So as you look at the landscape plan, you can see that there are three, three trees we identified in that buffer area, which met that criteria. Otherwise, it's a, it's generally a, a treat area with some vegetation. We are required to provide a twenty-five-foot buffer there, and we could certainly take a look at upgrading that, that buffer to satisfy some of your concerns.
Okay, that, that would be a good, a good way to start. The last thing I have is that I know there is a variance for the buffer that may be required. And my count is that there are eight parking spaces, if that is correct, that fall into that buffer and into that, that area where there's a waiver required. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, that sounds about correct.
Okay, so, so that would impact parking if the waiver were not to be granted. Okay. That's all I have. I appreciate the time, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No? See no? More favor? All right, gentlemen, where do we go from here?
Well, I'd ask for feedback. If, if the board generally is in favor of losing the retail unit, getting some more parking, we're happy to pursue that. I talked to my client and, and he's, he's happy to pursue it. I'm just looking for some feedback to see if that's something that isn't, you know, interesting.
Okay, yeah, I think it is.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, what does a conforming application look like? What would it look like? Because we're spending almost three hours now trying to figure out how to take your ordinances and bend them and squeeze them and shove them into some kind of land use pretzel. So I'm just wondering what, if it's conforming, what would it look like? Because they could, I think, give us a conforming application would be a pretty straightforward meeting. They chose not to, they refused to do that, they haven't listened to two and a half hours of comment. And so now we're trying to figure out how to shove it in to, to now chop the, I'm familiar with that property on Half Mile Road, to chop the building. I don't, I'm not a structural engineer, but I'm sure there's a whole host of structural engineering issues with having a car and car exhaust for maybe what, ten other spots by carving a hole into the building? And to try to just shove it in, I'm trying to understand why we're charged with shoving this together for them. That's what I'm trying to understand. So the question is, what's a conforming application look like if you chose to give one upfront?
Well, again, the, the term shoving, we're, we're trying to.
We're the ones who are trying to help you shove it.
Right, and, and what we're suggesting is we can add more parking, because that, that's, I think, what would help here. So that was one suggestion, it was even brought up by a couple of board members, so we wanted to pursue that if that's what the board is interested in.
I just didn't want there to be confusion that there's unanimity on that, that's why I wanted to verbalize that issue, because this is constant with so many applications.
My, you expressed my feelings. Yeah, exactly.
The policy is for all, take the forming application. I think I'm now, so you have that. McFarland's doing the best he can to make the structure work similarly. Do you architect? It's on the ball. I remember the last architect, it really wasn't the architect, it was somebody else that asked for it. I didn't forget that, but we wasted a whole lot of time. I'll probably say six hours. If you get a good application, you have to have a good fee. And first go around, you should not have a good fee. Sorry for you as the current representative. The applicant threw this money out in the parking lot and let it blow away. And, you know, yeah, this is performing a page, but I'm sure you've got better things to do. But that's how you get into the application. What Mr. Wall is saying, while getting tired, the message here is if you come before us, you gotta be close. As the current, as the applicant, and sometimes you have to tell the applicant.
Or, if I may, Mr. Chairman, because of course, having to, you know, everyone has a right to request the variances and waivers they deem appropriate, but what may be beneficial for the board, really following up on Mr. Wall, Mr. Riker's point, is to see even from a conceptual perspective, the size, and this is not just for you, this is actually, I'm speaking respectfully over you to the public at large as more applications come in, is, and Mr. McFarland, you've done this in the past for other, other places, where at least conceptually, you have the box, that's the permitted size based on no waivers, no, you know, no variances and the like. So at least the board has the opportunity to compare what a, a conforming app, at least your vision of a conforming application looks like with your requests. And then it gives you the, you, the applicant, you singular and you plural, the applicant the opportunity to better articulate the bases for your variance requests. That.
I understood, I, I think we put some testimony on the record of what a conforming building size would be earlier. As far as the square footage, what, what, what we could, you know, propose as, as a conforming building and, Mr. McFarland talked about those square footage numbers, it would be a smaller building, clearly. But again, to bring up, follow up on your point about the variance process, variance process under C one and C two, there's proofs, aesthetics, there's safety issues, design issues. And, and I think what we've shown you tonight is we're trying to build a very pretty building, I think a lot of you agree with that. We have a parking problem, and we're trying to get closer to a solution that works for everybody. And I, I thought we're doing that, I'm just, I was also trying to find out, see if that's the direction we want to go, to give up the retail use, add more parking, and that on, again, it's a balance. Every variance request is a balance, positives and negatives, that's what we do here. That we're hoping on balance, we can, we can accomplish that with the additional parking under that concept. So that's, I, I think where we're at, and we're happy to come back and show you that on paper if, if that's in the realm of possibilities, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. How long?
We could definitely be back, you know, as soon as the board's ready for us, next meeting is fine. Whenever.
We're booked until, until our meeting of March seventh.
Yeah, Graham's not here that day, we get the next one, is that?
That's March twenty-first, that's fine.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you have a call for the motion. So the motion is to carry this application, which is Block fifty-three oh one, Lot twelve, one forty-six North County Line Road, to the March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two meeting, without the requirement of, of further notice. The applicant has waived time through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay. So the motion was stated. And White have a second?
Well, I can't make the motion. Someone has to incorporate.
No notice. Can you guys have a margin notice?
Absolutely. I think I I hear what you're looking to see, and we're going to put that together for you.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Houdak?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your time and patience. We appreciate it.
Yes. Gentlemen, we're still in session. So listen, this evening is Danielle's last meeting with us. So I wish you the best, and and you've been great with us. Wish you the best as well. Thank you so much. And with that, can I get a motion? Oh, no, wait a minute. The attorney wants to go to executive session.
So, Mr. Chairman, whereas the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and whereas the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA ten colon four dash twelve provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by where the resolution, whereas it is necessary for the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson to discuss this session, not open to the public, certain matters relating to the items or items authorized, the items or items authorized in this case is just a brief synopsis of current litigation regarding Jackson Trails, the Goodrich, the Goodrich matter, and the matters between the United States Department of Justice and the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights.
Okay.
We could make the motion.
I would feel more comfortable if we stayed in this room, closed the doors. Yes, exactly. That's my. So we need a motion to go into executive session.
Listen.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.